Stand for the pledge, please. Fidelity students, library of the United States of America, and to your public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Please be seated. So we have, um, tonight.
Hello, everyone. Who's on the Zoom?
Virtually, so we have Jessica on Zoom, um, and also, so that's members present on Zoom, and then also we have Keith and Jennifer Sullivan.
Okay.
Also on Zoom, and for Zoomers in the audience tonight, we have Frank and Harley. And otherwise, we also have Bob, Mike, John, and myself. There are no additions this evening to the agenda. On the agenda is the COVID policy because that was potentially going to be continued from last meeting. I don't know if that needs to be continued at this time.
I don't know that there's really anything we have to alter from it. Do you, John?
I haven't heard how it worked out. I assume it did, so.
We just go, I mean, we, we basically, our policy is to follow the, the guidelines.
Right.
The CVC guidelines, so. I think we're, we're, we're on, we're on track and, and that we're, we're paying them while they're out, and that's.
Right.
And I think, I mean, my understanding was as it was left, the board decided that you could make updates as they were necessary. So if it's, if it's not necessary to keep talking about it this evening, we could delete that as an agenda item and put it on again if and when it needs to be updated or altered.
I would, I would say that, if, if there's, if we see that we need to tune a little harder or something that, that's unclear, we can, uh, put it back on the agenda. But for now, I think we have enough to, uh, give proper direction should, should the event occur.
I just have a couple pieces of papers that came up in the last few months that I'm going to submit to this thing here.
Okay. I don't think we're talking about it yet.
No, but I just.
You can add it to this pile.
To the pile.
Okay.
That's all I'm doing has to do with what may be happening in three to five years or not.
Okay. Jessica, are you fine with that?
Um, yes, this is Jessica. I'm fine with us not talking about that tonight.
Okay, then we'll alter it as necessary.
Okay.
All right, good. Scratch that off the list. No addition or deletions. We're all good. Approval of the minutes. What did everybody think about the minutes from the last meeting? Bob made a motion to accept the meeting, the minutes from the last meeting. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
John will second it. All in favor? Jessica?
Yes.
Yes. John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Yes. All in favor. Pass. Pre-requested announcements.
Um, this, the only announcement that I have is that Deb had sent out an email, and this is mostly for the Select Board, but so Deb had sent out an email about the town, the annual report. And so, and I sent an email to you all, but all the Select Board members, if there's any things from the highlight reel that you can think of that you'd like to be included in the Select Board's submission to the annual report, um, please let me know. And in the meantime, I'll start, usually I just kind of go through my notes and the minutes and month by month and see if there's anything new and noteworthy to, to put in. But if there's anything that you all feel like is important to add for the community to know about, let me know, because there's the deadline, I believe, is the 13th of January, I think Deb said, is when she'd like to get that submitted. So that will come right up real soon, so.
Frank?
A question. Did the Planning Commission have to make their own report in the annual report? And does the Energy Coordinator have to as well? Because all the energy planning has been the Planning Commission level.
You guys can fight that out between yourself.
Jessica, did, are we doing a report for the annual, annual report, do you know?
Uh, this is Jessica. Yeah, last year we did one, and I think Rick wrote it because he's the secretary. I'll contact him again and see if he wants to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything from the zoning administrator?
Nope.
Anything from the Planning Commission? Nope, they took the night off for the holiday.
Yeah, we, we took off yesterday. No, um, no holiday meeting for us.
Okay, good for you. Road foreman. Does Keith have anything to share or everything? Just, does he give me a thumbs up? Keith, you got a thumbs up? Everything's good?
Yeah, I'm going to an maintenance, um, yeah, nothing frustrating for sure.
Nice.
Okay, um, so Julie's not going to be around. Can you get in here to get the checks, Keith?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, uh, oh, probably have to have somebody with a key.
Okay. Are you going to be out and about tomorrow? Oh, Bob, Bob will have them. Do you have a chance to swing in and see Bob?
That's perfect, yep.
Okay. All right, everything else seems to be good. No, no big catastrophes. So we're good with that. All right, Frank.
Yeah, I knew some stories.
Yep. Okay, oh, Natalie Daniels, oh, you got, you got a calendar, I think, from Daniels.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see. Are they the people that fixed Coal Bridge?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so it's about $10,000 calendar. Cool.
Uh, yeah, or 30.
Well, $10,000 for the next 10 years. All right, everyone. We'll just keep rolling right along then. Anybody have questions for the road? Okay, assessors?
I have one thing to add to the roads. So, um, at the last meeting, we had discussed the speed signs, and Julie and I were all hot on naughty and nice and getting those things out. And then I, Rich and Mandy handed over the file and the cords and everything to me, and I was all excited to do it, and I just have not had a moment. It gets dark so early now, and it's like, I haven't had a moment to do it. So I, um, ultimately don't want to be the keeper of that in my own place. Just if I'm to vanish off the face of the earth tomorrow, what on earth would you do without that? So I am planning to have the file with the road speed sign stuff in the town hall somewhere. And I don't know if maybe that's something that we can ultimately coordinate with the roads crew to help us, if they want to help maintain those, or how, you know, once it.
Check stand?
Yep.
So, from my tablet or?
I don't.
That has capacity enough to change the, uh.
I see, I have to find out. I'll find out, Keith, exactly how it works, and I'll let you know. Rich said that it needs to be connected.
It won't work on anything apple.
Okay. And it needs to be, you need to be at the sign to do it with a computer. So my, this computer will work.
I think the road crew should be in charge of it because they know how to move them around and be dealing with them on the side of the road.
Yeah.
Because even just standing up there by your house.
Well, yeah, and that's what I was thinking. I'm like, well, I was going to go out and do it, and then I thought, well, it's kind of dusk, and me to just be like standing out there with my computer might get a little sketchy. So maybe, Keith, I'll figure out a time maybe to connect with you guys, and we can figure it out.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got some questions here.
Harley?
Since we're on the road foreman's report, um, there's a pothole on Button Falls Road that, uh, is into the road that you expect to be road and shredded my wife's tire. And I was thinking a warning, some kind of, uh, post or something.
What's, where is the hole?
On Button Falls Road. And if you're coming from Grandville to Route 30, it is on the right side.
About halfway down the road?
About halfway down the road.
Before you go through the woods?
Uh, actually, within the woods.
In Scotts Woods there, okay.
Uh, and, uh, the roads, uh, the road edge is chewed up there, but there's this one spot where it is eaten into the road by 10 inches.
Yep.
I measured, um, and so the road, you're, you think you're on the road, and then you, if you're moving out of the way of an oncoming truck, your tire actually gets into the pothole, and it just so happens the edge of the asphalt is sharp and shredded the tire. And I think, um, because it's into the road, and I'm not sure what can be done in the winter, it's some kind of warning or a, uh, a cone or something at that spot.
Okay.
Um, it's the, when you're coming from Grandville to Route 30, it is before you get to the new pasture with the, you know, right before you get to the new pasture.
Can you check that out, Keith, and see if you can cold patch or something?
Definitely. And we will, we'll do something with it here when we get something besides a chilly morning.
Yeah. Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Assessors said nothing. Town clerk?
Yes. So Deb Hawkins submitted a memo from the town clerk's office. Uh, Deb has submitted the reservation form to the Meadowway Community School for Town Meeting. However, when legislation convenes next week remotely, they will be addressing emergency legislation with regard to town meetings. So there are likely going to be procedures put into place, much like last year, to facilitate running a safe election. We will be sending out postcards, making it convenient for people to request absentee ballots. The Meadowway School District Facilities Use Agreement needs to be signed by Mike in the event that we do meet in person for town meeting. I'll pass that along to you, Mike. The office will be closed for the remainder of this week. Back to full swing next week. Have a good evening. Respectfully submitted, Deb.
Thank you. Any questions on her memo or anything? Okay, town treasurer's report.
So Julie Mack submitted a report from the treasurer's office. There are two warrants this week. The payroll for this period was $10,246.97. Accounts payable was $44,540.86. General fund monies $15,488.38. Highway, $33,035.50. Of that, $14,852.51 was for waste, for West Pollet Stormwater ARPA Likely Project. Waste water was $6,263.95. And Julie wishes for everyone a safe, happy, and healthy New Year. Here's to 2022. And the two motions requested tonight will be for the approval of the payroll warrant, number 22037, for $10,246.97, as well as for the accounts payable warrant, number 22038, for $44,540.86. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack.
Okay. Everybody have a look over the warrants? End up looking over.
Oh, and the other item, and FYI, not in the memo, the VTAL, VTAL internet is up $25 for each place, the garage and the town hall.
Okay, here are the warrants. Does anybody want to make a motion on the warrants?
I'll make the motion to accept both warrants or to approve both warrants? Or do we, do we need to do it?
Do we do it?
You can do them together.
We can do them together, it's just the two warrants.
The motion reads, uh, motion made to approve the payroll, payroll warrant, number 22037 for $10,246.97, and the accounts payable warrant, number 22038, for $44,540.86.
Exactly how I wanted it.
That's it.
Perfect, yeah.
That's what he said. I was just speaking it louder. So all could hear.
He had been, he hadn't been putting in his part days. I asked him about that, too. He said that he.
So second?
You'll second that?
Yeah.
All right. So we have to do roll call.
All in favor? Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Yes. Any enemies? Julie was wondering about getting the text, and I just sent her a text to the effect that Bob will have them and Keith will pick them up.
She had another email about, whether we should submit, submit an insurance bill.
Right.
I don't think I got that.
I did see that. With the $1,300 for the repair and insurance, has a $1,000 deductible, so. And my God, my God says leave it alone because every time you hit it, it just, they're, they're not going to give you $300 for free.
Right, right. They'll catch you.
What do you?
Yeah, I agree. It'll just be another check in the box and.
Yeah.
When it comes to.
Yeah, you, you went to the cookie jar too many times this time, so.
Right. That sounds fine with me.
Okay, so we'll, I'll just, I'll just answer it right now, and I'll say, uh, or Jessica? Do you feel that we want to, do you feel that we want to, uh, submit that claim, um, from that email that Julie sent out? Um, the.
Furnace.
The $1,000 deductible, and the furnace repair was like $1,300?
Yeah, probably not. I mean, it's also nearly the end of the year, right? So the New Year's kind of start.
Right. So I was just thinking that every time you keep packing away, they find ways to raise your, more claims you have, the more, the higher your rate goes. So, okay, I'll just send Julie and answer that message and tell her that not to bother Irving repairs. Um, they took it up, $1,000 repairs, $1,318. Do you want me to try and file this claim?
So I assume she's got this part of the warrant.
The board decided not to file a claim. Okay. Those warrants here. Thank you. Emergency management?
Nothing from either emergency management or health officer until the first meeting of the month next.
And wastewater treatment? Nothing, nothing that I know of.
Nothing. I'm just going to make sure.
Julie and, Julie and Jill have been talking about a bill from A1 about a pump and stuff, but I think they're working through that to make sure that everything is good with that. Now, other than that, everything seems to be going all right. Looked like we did have a high E coli run that when we had the breach in the line. But the last test I saw come through, it was all back to where it should be. So I think we're all set there. Old or unfinished business?
There's nothing on the agenda.
Nothing on the agenda. Can anybody think of anything? Okay, any new business?
I'm not sure if it's old or unfinished business, but my duty as a large animal pound keeper, I received some notifications that there were animals running loose again on Byer Hill. So I contacted the, uh, one of the caretakers of the animals, and she responded that she would go gather them up and get them in and thank me for the call. So just make note of that.
Yeah. And she followed through on that? Okay. Well, that's good.
Your title, your title is large animal warden, or?
Pound keeper.
Pound keeper, right. Sorry, a lot of titles.
Chief cook and bottle washer and.
Yeah. Whatever nobody else wants to do. Um, I see right here that the Routland Regional Planning Commission, um, only went up $25 increase from last year. So that's, um, $1,000 to town. I think we just, I don't think we have to. Select, Select Board budget, it just, it's just part of the deal. We certainly reap the benefits from being part of that organization, so. That's it for, is there any new business?
Other than the, just from, for me, the, other than just the reports, the annual report, I mean, as we're gearing up for a town meeting, there's just that sort of year-end stuff that trickles into the first couple of months of the year, so just to be considering that. And.
So you'll, you'll pack away and write a draft for us before the next meeting, probably in two weeks?
Yeah, I'd say so. Um, yeah, I'll try to have a draft for the next meeting, and that way you can take a look at it because, let's see, our next meeting is on the 11th? Yeah, so if, we'll have it for then, and then if the board can approve it, that way we can get it to Deb by the deadline of the 13th.
Yeah, so if we can.
I'll try to get it to you next week so you have time to look at it, and if anybody has any updates or suggestions.
Circulate it through, would, perfect. That would be great. Thank you.
Yep.
And public comment?
Has there been any interest in the Planning Commission vacancy or the other one?
Nothing. Um, there is some interest in the DRB. I've heard of one potential interest, per interested party in the DRB, and I think that the plan was that they were going to connect with some of the members and learn a little bit more about it and see if it's something that they, you know, can, feel like they can manage. Um, so I've heard that interest there. I've not heard of any interest for the Planning Commission. I do, as far as I know, it went to the paper, and it's on the website. Um, I think maybe it was going onto Front Porch Forum, so.
Harley, you've been coming to the meetings. Would you be interested in being on the Planning Commission?
Uh, yes.
It's okay, we have.
Uh, but, but I haven't taken action yet.
No, 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 yeah, we'll.
Submit the letter of interest. I was waiting to see it in print somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, I will submit my.
Well, yeah, what seems like, well, it'll be more in print after the holidays, so once you see it. Great.
And the last thing is, is that, uh, this is, I went to the State of Vermont's hearing on the 2022 Capricious Energy Plan. They've been, they have set these goals, you know, all these energy goals, right? But they're at a fraction of what their goal attainment is right now because of money. Middle-income, lower-income people just can't do everything that they're, you know, what these goals are coming out of these things, but they're good goals, all right? So they're keeping the goals going, you know, fairly lofty, uh, as to attain it. But this is, this is, we're going to have to comply with this. And the state, the Select Board is going to want to, this is weeding through this, which ultimately the Select Board will be deciding on. There's more requirements, and there's an Act 7174 standards update that's going through in public comment right now where quote-unquote "must now include recommendations for regional municipal energy planning and standards for issuing determination of energy compliance pursuant to blah, blah, blah." The changes they're looking at is setting, to update the status treatment of forest blocks as constraints. They want to be seeing forest block areas conserve somehow uh, in order to be treated as constrained for energy development. And so we'll be mulling that over at the Planning Commission for sure, but that's a mouthful to be going into forest blocks owned by individuals. And I believe that is, in my opinion, inadmit to name and is seizing of valuable property from landlords. And I don't know if John agrees with that or not, but that would be what it sounds like.
Well, they're constantly trying to, uh, avoid splitting up large forest tracts for wildlife, migration, and, and others. Um, unfortunately, many of the bills that have been presented that I was involved with when I was up there, um, would take away landowners' rights in, in some shape or fashion, and, uh, Well, they've required that if you wanted to split it up, it would be by have to go through Act 250. And, uh, a lot more. Well, they've required that if you wanted to split it up, it would be by, have to go through Act 250 and, uh, a lot more than that, rather than just keeping it the way it is. So, uh, so that's a, I, I think what they're looking at, they're trying to go after the national or international owners, whether it's Plum Creek or some group, um, rather than families. And, uh, not that families can be innocent and, in view of the, some environmentalists, but, uh, um, they're trying to keep blocks, which is an adequate goal, but you can't step on peoples that have owned the property for, in my case, a generation.
Yeah, right. It's, it's, it's taking someone's value and if they're looking to set up this and do it, you know, for nothing, see eminent domain, I pay something for it. The, the, the land trust thing was a reimbursement to landowner, it wasn't a taking of development rights. It's a meeting of minds. So this is something we're gonna have to chew through because it's gonna require municipal plans and regional municipal plans to incorporate this some urge regards to this. And so, uh, this is just something that eventually you guys will be...
So, taking large tracts of forest land for energy development, what, what are they gonna do?
No.
That's not quite?
Um, if the two got conflated, it sounded like to me. My understanding is there's an energy plan, but part of that is environmental concerns of keeping large tracts of forest as large tracts of forest for wildlife, uh, not, not for generating energy.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking, like, what are they gonna do, clear cut and put solar panels up or something?
Then, then also, in addition to that, but that's the change here from in 174, is that alternatively, a new standard could be added that require regions and municipalities to consider whether these areas should be treated as constrained for energy development. So this is, again, what John Runford ran into up in the legislature is people coming down with idealistic goals of not only the animals being able to use forests, but the, but the, uh, miss, how do you, how do you take that? That's, that's, that's not an domain. And you're gonna be constraining something which the land trust, the farmer decided, I want some cash, so I'm gonna give my land up for the development rights, but I'm getting paid for it. This sounds like a taking from a regional municipal to constrain certain, certain uses like that, energy development would be a, 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 that's, that's a whole legal direction and I don't think that we should be going in...
Didn't we just hear that, that the grid won't support any more energy around here anyways?
Right, right, but they, they come down and they want to have these pound documents address this stuff, including low, uh, affordable housing and a whole bunch of things that we have to figure out. And how do you do that, you know?
A whole bunch of great ideas with no way to do it. Not typical.
Something that we have to, we have to dance around.
Sounds like to me.
Well, that's what the planning commission is looking to do.
Excellent. Thank you, Frank.
Yep.
Yeah, the only one thing is last week, the, the meeting before, we got the, uh, the letter of support got overlooked for Haystack Catering and I was able to connect with everybody and we sent a letter of support.
Great.
Um, got it to Mark in time for his deadline.
Great.
That was all good? And other than that? No other? Harley, anything? Nothing? Nothing?
Anybody on Zoom have anything else to share? Could it be a Christmas miracle?
It could be a Christmas, it could be a Christmas miracle, yes, it did. All right.
Well?
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Wow.
Fast. Thank you all for coming.